Good afternoon, everybody. It is Wednesday, July 20th, it's 3 o'clock, and we are convening this regularly scheduled monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees in Newbury Town Library. My name is Alexander Burke. I'm the chair at the moment. And the other trustees, please introduce themselves.
My name is Carrie Litteris.
Beth Sanami.
I think we're even. And attending us also are...
Erin Thompson. Where are you meeting at?
I was Assistant Director, Erin being the Director of our library. All right, I'm calling the meeting to order now at 3 o'clock. A couple minutes possibly, yes. And the first item we need to work on is approval of minutes from our meeting in May.
Alex, can I have something to say to you at this time?
Yeah, let's begin with, I know the business if we take another meeting.
Okay, that's me.
Will it be okay?
Yes.
Okay, great, super, okay.
I want to just actually delete the June 25.
You don't say "May"?
We did.
Yours is not the only concentration. This is the minutes from the June 15, 2022 meeting. And has everybody had the opportunity to read through them, or any captions or requirements?
No.
Okay. All looking good, call for motion to accept these minutes. And second, and you're loading unanimously to accept. Okay. Our next item of business is our Director's Report. Erin Thompson, you're on.
Right. On the dates first, going into this day, and as I'm moving. But in general, I'll try to have to give that time to the people. So I'll start with finance. We are on to our 2023, and we are happy to see how our 2023 bill and all of its math goes down to what we're doing now, and a question we create, I think, that we like. I think they're working on the ARIS report, and a financial report, and state that we do a call as well. We still have a little bit of ambiguity about some of the funds. And I'll be meeting with Darian, Tom Hall, and everybody who's in the group.
If you're doing it, yes.
To talk about funds. So one thing that I discovered is that the balances that are showing on the town reports that I received each month are not necessarily balances in fund effect. It is what has been allocated and kind of set in that fiscal year. Funds are managed by financial company, whose name is, say, we don't know.
Or following.
Thank you. And so at this meeting, I guess we will get an idea of what the principal is in these funds and what the interest that we're setting. And what's behind that, it's that I don't want to include funds necessarily, but are you spending just the interest or are you, you know, what are you spending? So that would be, but I don't have information on that. We do have, if you look at the budget summary, first page. Because our budget request, we passed through, and we got a bigger budget, and we can't hear from the legislature and all of that. It means that when you do our materials requirement for 19%, 19% of the bigger number. So that bigger number, why is that being at $81,000, or $446? What is allocated from the town is only $64,348. So we have a short call of just over $27,000, which needs to come from all of the funds and go towards materials. But you kind of, do you want that for a second? Does that make sense for everyone?
Say it again.
So the total this year for 19% materials, expenses, and what's required is $81,446.
Right.
What we get from the town does not, will not cover that entire amount. What we get from the town is only $64,000 and change.
What was that, get to the end of the report?
That was always in the budget, I guess.
So?
From last year.
When the budget request was submitted.
Yeah.
Although we were seeking the 4, 5, 6, 46,000. Within their request...
Did not increase. They added, I think, $10,000 to FY '21. The municipal expenditure note that they give us, so they have FY '21 and they gave us $54,000 roughly. That didn't cover a whole 19%.
Twenty-two?
And that was in FY '21.
Twenty-one?
In FY '20, sorry, that was in FY '22. Now, we got $10,000 more, bringing us to $64,000 initiation. It's still not enough to cover it.
How did they determine that number, though? I mean, shouldn't they be doing it the same way you're doing it?
They didn't, so that was what was in our budget request this year.
Is that simply because we weren't sure we were going to get that money?
I didn't really know what that was going to be.
Oh, okay, well, no, I'm just, okay.
So this was, this is pretty much what I'm up there.
Yeah.
You know, from December of last year. I'm not sure where the decision came from to add $10,000. We have $10,000 to sell the town as the amount. It is more than we had, you know, prior to. But it is not enough. That said, hasn't been enough past years either. So it's not...
It wasn't a certainty.
Right. It's not unusual that we have to go to our funds to make up the difference. It's just that this year, it's a good bit more because we got our budget request and we have a bigger operating budget.
So basically, you took what's in town?
I was, I just don't have a basis for it. You know, it's possible that the $10,000 is what the town expected to give us. Or, you know, I just don't have any information about that to give you detail. We're really focused, I remember, you know, talking with Jean about getting new position, getting salaries on your umbrella of town salaries. That all happened, which is really good. This coming year, trying to get this number four and nine is what our required materials and services is. Will be one of the parts to what appear in the budget request, along with getting federal budgets.
Who approved of the library budget? Like, how does that process go? That's where I'm disconnecting. Because somebody had approved of the budget.
Right.
And then the town's doing something different because of what we requested.
So our request, and I do have documents to send you from the budget request.
Yeah, I'm just trying to...
So it's something that, you know, before we were able to go together.
Right.
And I helped on as well. The board thinks I said I really know how this number came to be, other than that's what's on us.
Right, I guess my question is, who approved it?
How does the funding mechanism work?
It goes to the town. A budget request goes to the town, that makes sense.
Right, so did they get this budget request, this large budget request?
They get it, not in this format, but yes.
Okay, let's look at it this way. Jean's request, as Erin's going forward, will cycle at the end of this year, the beginning of the next calendar year.
Okay.
Cycled through Tracy days. Tracy, looking at the universe of expenses and what that demands within the community, will endorse the request as submitted. We've been aggressive in the last two fiscal year submissions, seeking additional position. Tracy blessed it for the FY '23 event. And from Tracy, it moves forward to the FinCon, Financial Committee.
Okay.
Whose five, six, seven, whatever members have a look at it. And fortunately for us, did bless it.
Okay.
It then moves to the Board of Selectmen for consideration.
Okay.
Fortunately, we have sturdy allies on the Board of Selectmen. I think in particular, Jeff Holby, Alicia Greco, Daniel Packer, now having come in, Jerry Healy's always been strong with us, Anthony Jeff Walker aside, but he's a good dude, too. Then it moves to the town meeting. And town meeting will, it's clustered as the overall, the global, the overall town budget. And within the budget, that number, four, five, six, was requested for Newbury Town Library. Town meeting...
I'm sure that's your job, it does go to the Board of Trustees before it goes...
Oh, yes.
I'm just wondering, who approved the, is this what you got from the MBLC?
This is a requirement. So this $81,000, if you're aware, where it says 19% in terms of material effects, that is, we are required to spend, to give 19% of whatever our total operating budget is.
Right, who determined the total operating budget?
That is our salaries budget plus, you know, our materials budget.
Right, but who physically does that? Is it the town, or is it a bigger...
It's a combination. So we gave our request, the town wants to give it like a three percent from salaries. And so each year, we are asking for larger numbers to shrink towards the town. So, and then the town says, that's enough.
Okay, so this is the amount we asked for, and we need 19% of that to get to the 81. So how do you get to $64,400?
Because this is what the state wants us to spend.
Got it, that's the difference, okay.
So that's, the MBLC is the state, and that's for leverage.
That was my basic question. Who's determined?
That took some leaves, didn't it?
Well, that's okay, it's a learning process. It is. So the materials expenditure department of state to maintain our certification and to receive our state.
Got it, okay.
If my memory is correct, at the end of the fiscal year, we have a special contribution in the cost of materials. See, there are several levels of percentage of the MBLC requires, maybe you start to do it. And if you do it at 16, I think you get up to 50, so the goal is over 19%. And the question is, is that, do we have enough interest, as opposed to principal, to give to the donation count, just to take care of that?
Exactly. We have enough, literally cash to do it, you know what I mean? But what's happening to the funds and the process?
So we need to get clarity on that.
Right.
To see, to see if we're going to have, you know, this is going to be a ongoing problem. Because this year, it's going to be 3% higher than the year before, and it's going to be even better.
So this is, this is what the meeting, the gift box, that's going to be, you have done it.
Well, you look at your own 200, you just said it.
Yeah, yeah. Right, so in the meantime, there is a short call, or a short call. The difference of $27,000, which you'll see under the total funds budget here, that's what we said is the difference between these two numbers. And that's what we need to make up in Sydney on materials.
Do you have any?
So these $27,000, I think, $27,533, you see that under the total funds budget? That number comes from taking the $81,446 minus the town's $64,348. That's where that number comes from. And so...
That's not a budget, that's a request.
It's a requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a budget. Money is there.
It is there.
Where?
In our funds, which is below, in the green building. So all of this...
And the donated funds.
Right, so we have state, this management, all of this space, this is all the money that we have. And to best of my ability, as far as we have our meeting, it looks like we have $32,400 in our funds. I'm wondering what.
Spendable?
Spendable. So the materials, I have to lay later to accomplish that. Materials is a specific thing, and I'm still getting, I'm still finding out things that actually count as materials. So anything, you know, that certainly for both reasons past goes in. But I just found out from your earliest plan that our photocopier, which is $1900 a year, counts as materials, and that trends to be for that. So materials, that money that is spent, can come from anywhere. It doesn't have to come from these funds, they could be a grant. So what I've done is, I've been able to allocate, if you look down at the bottom of the green building right here, $22,000 and change from our new funds to go towards materials. That leaves a $5,000 gap. And our hope is that we will write case in grants, and we will see if they can give us funding for more materials to pull that back. So we moved this to this time into this year, and that should $5,000 come out of taxes. This company is a lot, that's to just...
No, mine was just like a basic question. I came up with this, I wasn't explaining it correctly, but it's been asked before.
What?
Because I was like, wait, who's dictating that?
Right, speaking out, okay. It was very educational.
It was an absolute question. I'm sure we would have asked questions if that answered, you know, further down the road.
And just like me, you would have had to explain it again.
No.
It took two...
Hopefully not.
So that's, that's it in my shop.
Deep breath. Where are the N A I D numbers?
Sorry?
Where is the N A I D number?
Which stands for?
That is in...
You refer to every industrial development?
That is in gift donations. And you'll see a quote of the rate, balance of $87,000, $25. That's where that money is. Which is a general gift fund that is entirely spent while having restrictions. Some of these do have restrictions, so for instance, the RAYMEL fund may only be spent on things for children. So some of them have restrictions, but I think it's not. The $87,000 for gift donations is the total. That is not in the passive, that's the actual...
Sitting in there.
So we're in that.
I'm showing you the full balance, but we've already spent 30, I think.
I have over on the left, $30,000.
Yeah, I saw that.
We have not spent that.
We haven't expended, no.
And we might not spend all of it.
We've allocated it.
We've allocated, and my understanding from Jean, the secretary, is that maybe that $30,000 wasn't meant to spend all of it, unless absolutely necessarily. It was, okay, we'll put this question in here, but maybe we'll need to spend 10, 15. You know, so that's why I have over on the left, the boxes there, 30K, even for the rest. And then there's a correction for exhibits that figure went down this year. We don't have that for you, I'll have that for you.
But you know, we have the lowest method down in here as well.
Yes.
That's in the hands of the trust of the friends.
Correct.
It's not ours.
Not, but the only thing in here that's yours is gift donations. That's the trust we manage by.
Is the lowest method down included in the tool form?
Yes.
I think that Tracy would not include it.
But it is, it is a fund for the libraries. It's under, you know, that's just a, a number of these funds have regulations that limits that to focus. And so that is funded, something you have to account for the library, so that's a big amount of money.
We kind of need to know...
You work with them, you said we need X for X.
Right. It's, we need to know what money does a member have access to, overall. Just like, so the ARPA grant that's here, that's only going to be here this year. That's going to get spent, you know...
Yeah, you show us that.
Yeah. Yes, we saw. So, you know, it's just the...
Which one is it?
The ARPA grant for the self-checkout.
Yeah.
So that, I have a meeting, I have a Friendsville meeting this Friday for that, and then it gets installed, fingers crossed.
Yes, oh, good.
Yeah, so then that line, I don't think it's... So that's, that's pretty much everything. To kind of dive a little deeper on the next page, this may be more information than you would want, but I wanted to share it with you at least this one time. You will see how we've allocated the budget for each area of materials. And what, what counts as materials in the library. And so, you know, different people here have charged different budgets. So first, Ms. Catherine, but she owns fiction, favorite maps, pop titles, and all of those. Those are her, and she images them. So that's kind of how, how this works. And it is a way of keeping track of that, you know, how much we spend each month towards art of 19% materials. And I can give you that every month, or I can say that, I just thought I should give it to you.
I think it's cool, to be honest with you. I try to sit down, keep going on a recurring basis.
Correct.
And, all right, so bottom line, we're going to wind up on toward the end of the fiscal year at some point, needing to delve into various balances on G and D.
I have $10,000 allocated for G and D come to your list this year. That's my goal. And so that, maybe, as we...
That'll, that'll close the gap.
The 87, 825, whatever, thanks to the G and D. Is that a steady amount, who said something that's invested, and, you know, so that's it?
That's it.
Okay.
Same one as down there. So prior to, and that is new, we have a number that big, because 75 of that was looking in this process when it was made, when made decided.
They closed up shop.
Yes, and it was all...
It resolved itself, and they gave money to several others, and they passed, and they gave $75,000. I would, so normally we do not have a figure like that for... So it's looking very great right now.
Yeah. That's what we can do.
Yep.
We could strongly want some of that.
Right. So if ever goes out, I can run and say that.
I just wanted to say that, that needs to be liquid.
That's right.
So the $87,000 liquid, needs to be liquid, that's why it's not tied up.
That's right.
All right. So, I'm excited. Our new services library, Nikki Hariri, is through come through. And within, I think, two days, she already knew children, character by name, and jumped her in. And she's wonderful, and we haven't already had checks to her. We will be in advertising for our information assistant position. Hopefully, they'll, this week, I just need to finish up writing the job posting, but we have the job description complete and proof that's on hold, so it's ready to go. And then we'll start blocking reservations, and then we'll see how it goes. You know, it's new fiscal year, so several libraries with different budgets. There are a number of job postings out there, and you're not competitive. This is 26 hours and 30 hours a week at $18 an hour. So it's not really full time, but it's definitely, I'm sure it is.
Classified for permanent work time?
I, it's, I think classified is full time, but it really is, 26 hours and 30 hours every week, you know? But it is half. The FY '23 rates, the rate increases for staff were announced, but wages are still very low. So for example, our part-time staff in FY '22 were making $15.07 an hour. They got 37 cent rates. So now they're making $16.07 an hour.
Can you start with that?
No.
You know...
So I'm out of the loss of where to find money. And I, I started by coming back from vacation, and, oh, please don't let me write this on. Let me get back. Because there's, you know, we have the best staff. And this is really just not close to something that someone can afford or not afford. So I'm not sure, I just, I don't just think we'll, I'm going to mention it every time until we can fix it somehow, because I'm out of ideas.
Where do we stay? In the spectrum of such compensations in this area?
Well, that's interesting, because there is an issue with libraries overall as a predominantly female gender industry of being poorly paid. And so if you look around, you know, the poorly paid librarians, it doesn't really help, and then you're off.
Okay.
So let's look at what you make at McDonald's in your report, and you make $19 an hour, versus the high level intellectual skills that are required by our library staff.
You should go to that. Okay, bring it. You're going to come back with a spectrum which is discouraging in and of itself. But you said, well, how do we move forward, how do we fix this?
Right, I think all I can come up with right now is going back to the town of project season, that where we just received our budget request to get ourselves up to kind of advocacy. I'm not sure how much money there's going to be again. So I don't know, you know, I've been looking for a kind of weird idea, is anything coming from the library?
I'm just curious. There are other professional people hired, who tend to pay with better than us, $20,000 worth, which is also a human profession, except profoundly dedicated.
I'm not, I'm not prepared, I don't know.
But I think that would be the range of, I don't know where else.
When I went, when I went to AJAP for to categorize information systems... When I went, when I went to, uh, the job board to categorize information assistant position and I talked with them about various responsibilities, the position was graded too high for salary to compare the, um, some of the other people in town. Like when I say it, one of them was a part of that, they're in the opposition with us, like, you know, at the same level. And obviously that's not, it's not the same level. So they had to drop it even though the actual responsibilities of the job rank the higher. But because it's out of, at keeping with other, other, other salaries in town, it could, it would look bad. You know, they put it on par with a social program.
With what?
If, if you put this position or information assistant on par with, um, which I can remember the, the second position, the support of health position and they really were not happy.
So they're really not doing, giving the salary based on skills and experience and your, your educational background, which is what the job should be. I mean, I worked at resources, that's what you do, right? So they're not doing that because they.
They don't have it, I guess. Um, so here's a problem, how, how we get money for library staff? Is the whole town is dealing with similar issues. Um, so I don't, you know, different areas, you know, you talk about for this part, I mean, they train, they're available there. They get either early, they get trained, they leave. And that's kind of what has happened here as well.
A journey.
Sorry, what?
A journey.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Um, so. It's, it's, it's no small issue to tackle, um, and it does need some.
Last year, we looked at supplementing part timers' compensation using state aid. Regardless of precautions. Resistance is against it, okay, but we did it. In this year's F O twenty three salary budget, were those supplementals re-removed?
Yes. They were worked into your, your municipal salaries, but.
They were deducted from other people's, are you?
Are losing.
Removed. So compensation levels remained at the same level?
Yes.
Okay. And the money is forthcoming in the regular salary budget now?
Yes.
Okay. So, now, state aid.
So that makes state aid more available, right? Because we're not utilizing that hourly wage that we're tacking on in state aid. However.
What?
State aid is, it's not finite, but what we get, so now it's G A is about forty thousand. But we only get about ten thousand each year. I, it's, it's very frowned upon by town hall. It's not impossible to fund it, but it's very frowned upon, and I did talk to everyone about it then. To utilize state aid to augment wages, but it is a little. Um, what's tricky is the, it's similar with finite resources, depending on how much you use. So where we have, um, we need to make up twenty seven thousand dollars this year from funds. But we have to use state aid some year and we can make promises to people about salary.
Can't spend the same dollars twice.
And suddenly we can't do that on the debt, nothing I want to do it. So I want to really, um, exhaust A and L over ways to help reach itself. I'm sure.
There's a way.
I'm sure it's going to be a passive word because here people are losing staff because of gas prices. How much it costs for somebody to get to here, close business. They're losing people because they need girls or they have a family, um, or, or, or.
When my insurance agency moved from Windham to Manchester, doing a purchase of the agency by the Manchester agency. I sat and talked to the administrator and said, hey, look, most of our guys live in Salem, New Hampshire, Hudson, New Hampshire, Windham, New Hampshire, and you're putting on them a half hour commute one way. You really need to increase compensation. Private, business, and basically told me to jump out to Windham. Okay? So, you know, people will make rational decisions regarding places to work. And all those three employees I referenced, they all quit and went to work in the insurance agencies inside of New Hampshire in Manchester. Which are better places to work. I mean, but.
First, well, we're in the middle of the brick, there's a thing for.
Yes.
There's a whole thing going on that has so many different neighbors and diodes, it's really hard to figure it all out. Because people are recognizing that Super洛pay doesn't come down there, they can't stay by the. And, um, and there are pretty good other ways to live their lives. And if you go around, how many, how many businesses do you see that positions older?
Oh, yeah.
Have they lost their job?
Yeah.
So, so we're beginning to navigate.
We are.
And, and the issue is the town, the town doesn't want to spend our extra funds to get, like, in a library and outrank the rest of the permanent tenant. And so it's politically completely understandable that they're not going to pay.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's really a whole town issue.
It really is.
Everybody in town, they're underpaid, I assume except public for the county.
Um, Tracy, not all that will compensate, not that war, but sorry, maybe. Which is not bad. War, where?
Uh, you know, like, I just.
Anyway, you know, but, but she, you know, the town, you know, the million, you know.
Yeah.
Have a better salary.
Or never.
So we have one of the ideas that we had of using some of the money that we had in the special, because the bonus that would really.
Oh, yeah, a hard time, yeah, firmly. And when I questioned that part, I thought, oh, this isn't hard. But.
I was always following on money.
Uh, well, it's nothing, yeah, it's not hardly, I shouldn't say, didn't, yeah.
When I read it, I was like, what?
Yeah, so, and but back to compensation, we will have that.
Yes.
There are other ways to compensate staff, so let me give you an example. Employees here for the first five years get two weeks of vacation. I want to have two weeks vacation for nine years. Um, so that is not all of the time, it turns out, it's not even a full two weeks as we've been mapped.
It's measured by the hours put into the bank.
It's two weeks if you use it suddenly, you don't work on Saturday, but it is not two weeks if you use it long enough.
Now, there's two criteria. One is the accrued vacation time, right? This is what you refer to, two weeks, the three, whatever, okay? The second criterion is the number of hours you banked. Do you get a weekly report with a repayment check, just on the hours you banked? If you're going to take a week off or two weeks off, the hours which you work and for which you are compensated when lying and working are exactly the number of hours you got to have in your person banked if you take the full week or two weeks. So if you work thirty six hours, you're going to have seventy two hours in the bank if you're going to take the two weeks.
Well, but not just that, because you're particularly able to be clean on February and December because it started really early this year. So, and you're not allowed to take it.
The call begins on the anniversary date of hire, not.
No, it begins on July first, it, so it does, so let me explain. You have until September thirty to use up any vacation time.
Carry it over from the.
Or you lose it. Or you lose it, it's not.
Correct.
So.
Correct.
Your accrual of your two weeks starts July first every year.
Okay, do either carry it over or you don't. To begin accruing one twelfth of your allotment at the beginning of the fiscal year. But if it is not, but it carries forward, if you've done, use it from prior, you do have a ninety day window within which to use it.
And we only have until September thirty.
That's a ninety day window.
So I'm saying, so October, November, December, you can't do it. You will not.
If you so manage your time, yes.
I would feel bad if that, you can't earn it. You either lost it by September thirty and you can't accrue it to have enough to be off at that time. It's impossible, not that.
What is carried over?
You can carry over two full weeks if you like.
Sure.
You will lose it if you don't use it by September thirty.
Which.
On a positive, we get noses.
Yes, you do.
Have to use this by September thirty every year, in red, red eye. And vacation is like, it really.
Anyway, we're getting.
Very deeply easier.
Yeah, we are.
So we're talking it now.
It's relevant, yeah.
It's.
It's relevant.
Yeah, so my point is, is that staff gets very little vacation as it is. They're not allowed to use it when they might want to use it, save for Thanksgiving to go visit family. Um, when we don't have pride, not for Thanksgiving, not for Christmas, not for, we have Queens, um.
We go to the positives for the love of God instead of all of this stuff?
It's all relevant.
Yes, it's relevant.
It's all.
But we are supposed to be the leadership cadre of this organization. And let's not stress the downside, let's work on the upside, just as you said at the beginning.
Well, we need to talk about the downside because it's relevant to how I'm able to hire. I've been asked questions about what are your holidays, what are your, I've had people decline working for us, they say, oh, I'm not.
Yeah.
I cannot, I cannot get by on dying, I can't.
Has she now, when the woman from Saugus came up here dying inside and talked to her, it wasn't soluble?
Right. And she was asking, so be like, so my point is.
Yes.
We have a myriad ways in which we get one dying sack. And it comes with vacation time, it comes with holidays, it comes with, all of these things. And if you want to be attractive to, people want to learn to get into that, like, we need to start looking at some of the best layers and make changes.
How? Can I ask a question? Who determine, who is responsible for changing vacation?
That would be a town hall table, um, and it doesn't mean, so I realize that this is a library, not a library, but if only you talked about it, it's not going to change.
So everyone, not just the library, so it is a town.
And the broader new breed. These schedules are not unique to this town.
No, but, but she's looking at what is it we can do or may we pursue? Because I'll tell you, not everybody's out for money, they'd like reasonable money. But I know, you know, from listening to my daughter, time off, that's money. You know, you can say, okay, you don't get paid this much, but you have this many days and they know instinctively that's money to them. You know, benefits are the same thing, vacation time is benefits. So I don't think that's, that's not, you know, feasibly money per se, but that might be a nice way to say, get some uses, okay.
And, you know, I agree with you, and I think too that it's hard to take a township job as such a difference between state and local, who doesn't feel it? You can carry over yourself until you retire.
I think it would come.
And, uh, this is a rough road. It is, but I'm telling someone voices it, um, you know, it, there will be, there will be a change. I think that not only the library is going to be up, just trying to hire, carrying us to see everybody, it's going to be town by.
Because someone is smarter now, people are smarter because they're talking about it, or something like that, right? Right. And that's how it gets, you know, changed, or because people say, well, fine, but they'll work over there, right? Then they have a problem.
What's the rationale for not allowing the time to accrue?
Oh, no, 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 last thing, these are questions.
Which one?
Yeah.
Anytime.
The rationale is, if in that ninety day window after July first, an individual has earned, has accrued enough time off to take a two week time away during the ninety days, individual might then resign, this has happened once or twice in this room. And you're stuck with paying the two week community, the town is, take that out, off the employee and the scramble is to reinitiate your position.
Every company.
Yes.
Well, it was inevitable.
Well, business, that's what, most people in business did. They're like, I have X amount of days left, see ya.
Yeah.
But my last day work is really best.
So he, he'll take it against his best friend.
Yeah.
Which, anyway, within this context of this mess. What can we, generally speaking, okay, guys, as Erin is interviewing for this position, if it gets to the point that compensation is a deal breaker, what will happen, let us know.
Oh, I know, um, but I'd like to know before, you know, maybe he's.
The children, yeah.
Right. There was.
I don't recall having I come to the trustees.
Yeah, I thought she said it.
I didn't.
She wasn't able to.
I'm sure I told everybody.
And she was nine, in the midst of the negotiations, bring us aboard.
Yep.
I mean.
I'm pretty sure.
Most of us, most of us live in town, Marcus, Paige, he around as well.
Yeah, I think, I think that Sarah might have been chair at the time, I know I could play the conversations. I don't know. Um, but, yeah, it's, um, it's, it's a, it's a really tricky situation, and so I think it requires change. I don't know how, and, and I, I hate to sail this in private institutions, but I need to communicate it to the board.
Yes.
And I need us, I guess, to communicate it to the town for this.
But these are, you know, look, we work for the town, some of us for more compensation. We work for the town and the rules and the rules, the rates and the rates, we have to work within them.
No, you can change it, yeah, I was going to say, those are maybe broken if there's not reason.
Right.
But you got to go through it with a plan, you've got to say, this is not what we need to have.
The library crew is almost unique. Fires organized, unionized. Police are unionized, D P W is unionized.
I can hear that, so they're all real oriented.
They're what?
They're all real oriented, uh, rights.
True, true, and we do have a good bit of leverage there in a current environment. Well, how the hell long that's going to last, because anybody's question. Stay tuned.
Great, so it comes down, there's like a long list of all of these, uh, issues that, that affect staff indirectly, also directly with the library. How many could staff work, hey, well, we closed and staff lost wages, how do we close for these people who are not making their morning payments? So when stuff like this happens, snow closures.
You don't have to pay for cost to leave?
No, 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 if we close, like, when we close for the library for a day and a half, staffs need it. That has to be me. So when these things happen, you're running, it's a hit, and it's like, what was that? Because it's, it's just not, it's not right.
Well, it's not, it's not today's society, that's it. Pointing, okay, years ago, it's not. And that's my point, when you have rules, when rules are set up, you set a timeframe, things change. So, but, but we need a plan to do that.
We need to be able to sell.
Yes.
Sell it.
Well, how many of the firemen are using the library to buy roads?
Well, there's a small staff here. I know about over the others places.
But I just, I'm starting to spread it out. I'm starting to spread it, but.
Absolutely. Will force a news?
Yes. Yes.
And I agree with you. Identification of impressions.
All right, so.
So what are we gonna do, guys?
Well, I think we need to think about it, because we still think about it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then come together next time and if there were those ideas about strategies.
Maybe what we ought to do is a breakout? Maybe trustee meeting, maybe not, just a little tool for more angels.
I thought, I'm gonna ask, you know, people that work, like, you know, you know, we've been gotten tired, so. But my husband's still, he's great. You know, there's people around that can say, okay, what would you do? You know, they were in higher level positions, there, obviously, there's, there's people out there, there's intense out there and about to attack something like that. Because it's obvious the change needs to be done, brought up to today's society, it's not. So I would think on first before.
And don't worry, I won't forget to bring up the next one, I mean, the next trustee meeting.
I really think. But we don't have an organization in the country. We're trying to.
And we are great people, I'm really glad.
We do.
You're absolutely right. And it wasn't just luck. Because, you know, there's a lot of work going to try and track other people.
Anyway, all right, so moving on to the last part of Sarah Marjorie's staffing. It looks like we always like, and we didn't have a position that we thought we were gonna have. And I was trying to work out what I need, how this happened, and I can't quite figure it out. And she's, she said, don't worry about it, I put me to the watch, just start off, you budget, her right point to be free. And we didn't, didn't win it, I haven't had time because I never liked import them.
I was gonna say, how are you gonna fix it, because you're having issues too.
That's, that's exactly what I said. I would wanna make sure this year is funded, we don't have that happening. I mean, it worked out, we have stated, which is able to handle salaries, although I don't want that to happen. We do want to spend the entire budget. Um, so, um, it's still a puzzle. So we did, um, enough, including Oracle Center, however, their hourly wage is less than we were to have done.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. Um, I'm going to go back to a new era supporting right now, as long as getting, we can set up a whole way. So have you been able to completely done those with?
Well, if you want some.
Oh, thank you. Well, I'm surprised.
I stick with that. Do that.
Well, so I'm looking to buy all of it, I just haven't yet.
But I.
Thank you.
I appreciate you, I'm sorry.
All right, so.
Okay.
Library building in grounds, I have buildings. Uh, it looks like they could shut the ceiling yesterday. The next step is gonna be carpet, I don't know, maybe it's here from GNC, so we can hear that. I've got a date for carpet install, maybe I end it today. So hopefully, we can get rolling, you know, next week, because then we'll be able to burn the vacuum. Um, but I have no, no, uh, answers on that.
I've sent out a request, a quote for three contractors on the penny cap.
Oh, really?
No response. But the first one, James has committed to replacing the appliances in the kitchen. Once again, four dollars.
So, summer reading for adults and children, mostly dark, uh, it is really on the path. Um, through the larger children's center events, where the children have people that read their songs, which is wonderful. And, um, we have puppet coming up next week, and then weather patterns on ice waves. Um, we have adult summer reading, there's new prizes this year. We have a debt thing, low membership to trustee recommendations. Um, as well as to place to general, which is the place, and those are probably my friends. Um, let's see, so children's program is continuing. Um, it's, uh, tour, kind of doing services in library, maybe, but also based to feed. Um, and we, they have paid more than you. Um, so paid more and they'll set up a whole summer in general, so that it was warm enough and you would prevent them. Katie Mann, who is on part time, um, children's library, which was able to execute everything well. So she's been publicizing, she's been book ordering, she's been, she's over top, definitely. Um, so really, um, children's has kind of continued on without much of a problem. Um, for adult programming, we have some people, they want silver programs, can we get them? Then just a kid job.
We have a couple of years, but, um, two career.
Yeah, those are the kind of videos.
No, okay.
But in a, well, I believe one, uh, probably related to, to.
Postcard?
Yep, we have one. So, and then see, this one is interesting because we tried to do that last year. And also do it.
Yeah.
So I think that, I mean, people can get jobs. They don't need to learn more, but I'm different. All right, so, let's see, we did have drumming, um, last week. Yes, uh, I was over the beach and myself did the syrup eight minutes today. He was very excited that it was back, so I did drumming outside, moved inside for a little bit, then I went outside to go. I had a good time, so. And then next week, we have the Flamingo One Party and James Retired Center on twenty seventh. So, um, that's looking great, too well, we're on how to put that together. All right, so for friends of Dave, um, we have their group of board members. T M E, the president, Ralph F. Frascher, Adrian, and she also has subscribers to Boston. Um, and John Freeman has agreed to become his present president until anyone knows. Um, they are looking for a secretary as well as a director. Um, let's see, we also have also the commander there, also completed their terms on the front of this board. Uh, all three have said that they'll, they'll be back to help run, um, our best name, and that's a, um, need to go. For the world, for the world, just great. Uh, friends have received a positive medical relief technology fund. They created a separate account for us to use. Uh, and you're, we are utilizing tech fund now to purchase a new home scanner, who's leaving for a new position. Uh, the computer in the new position and a new computer for door, this computer, uh, um. I thought I had.
True.
Of course. Um, so that's working well. The other good thing about this tech fund, um, being under the funds is that they are able to get the part for. That lets, what that will do, they give it to you, because it's not a friend's account, it's a library one. That gives me the ability to have a friend card, not for anything, it's to protect, but usually when I have to use a friend card, it is, you know, like we can be scheduling software that we have to get rid of, that's tech. They use this for that, for, it's sweet for our marketing software. It will be able to get back now. So that's going to be a great, it's a great one. I had fun, it's always a fun, but, um, now that's very well. Um, let's see. The news I mentioned, the September P S is coming, uh, let's see. Oh, and I have a terms to note from the law. Um, that I thought was pretty handy, uh, Bradley shared that with me at a meeting. And, um, I just thought it was great, I changed a couple of little things so that it changed just to what I do at the living room. But, um, I thought that would be good for everybody to have going forward. It's definitely for any, any time, it's a pretty good, um, just as. We want, we want. And then, um, we brought back our old museum passes, it's my last seven weeks, and we have a pretty great lineup now. Um, so we have Museum of Fine Arts, Museum of Science, U S S, Museum of Aquarium, Austin Children's Museum, Edelso, we're proud of the museum, uh, Super Science Center, the Boston Harbor, Adam and Mary, um, Land State Parks, U S S Constitution Museum, and I will be submitting to the Junior Cultural Council for a grant for a struggling and must exist. So that will create a really great lineup. Um, we have a happy passes, this, or maybe like a little less, oh, because it'll, um, that may be one of the people that we have here. Um, so, and so hoping, um, that suddenly it could, it's a good vision.
I'm getting more.
Right, social media and my friends are just getting on, kind of, and I'm, I'm, Catherine has gone through the urgentist task of getting up on a, um, website through Asa, which is not using them. Um, and she didn't get them up there, so, uh, Cyberlos, I still have to wait for, it's early that we can work to get them out for. Cyberlos too, I guess, should be, we could all have now, I think, I think we're, maybe we're too, well, so we're the first. And then we'll know them, um, in our next semester and social media.
I just use, I just use the MFA page on it.
Oh, really?
And I'm, I'm, I'm making a masterclass in how to sign up for this, it's complicated. And, and one friend, Susan, they on FaceTime, not our side.
Oh.
I thought it was fine, I don't know, but you then have a code number or something. And the MFA page gives you this lot of, uh, races, you know, Denver, Denver Child, you know, but nothing to write in. So you have to put your thing in, and then he does the page, which now includes a lot of things. But it, for me, it was bottom half of my screen, I didn't scroll all the way down, I thought I got back to the same place. Because it wouldn't have any good first time, you know, it's the same thing. So I was on the phone with him.
I think that's pretty good, all of the museums, you know, because they have to kind of.
Yeah, the only one that was fine, I had, I had their, oh, not my phone.
Yep.
And use it with a scanner.
Yeah.
Put it on the, the little, the little board up there.
Yeah.
I keep telling people, we have them.
Yeah, we have them.
It's like, well, for two years, you're incredible.
So, but now, now we've got a really good.
It's a big, a lot of my friends are branching out, so they'll go there.
And it all comes towards material, but so that's.
Tickets do, huh?
Uh, it's circulating passes, that's something we need to make up later.
That's good.
All right, I'm gonna hand it over to Dorothy for the statistics as well as an awesome idea on our book to pass.
Oh, so I think, so you have the statistics there, you've got the monthly one for June, and then you've got the, that's why. Twenty-two total statistics reports. Uh, nothing entirely exciting, um, I have a note on the total statistics for the entire year. There's no quiet from usage, just because of the leak and, um, COVID, that's just not possible now, so that's a zero. Looking pretty good, everything's good, um, on the demon court, some of our top social media posts seem to move on around. People on these don't really love the community, we're on, are being saw, like, those pictures of the movie before and what was it after, people love that. Um, on Twitter, they really loved the post about, you know, it's like a building, they're like, what's going to be? So all of the building, which is great. Um, they raised me in questions, I can try to answer them, but.
What's the old show?
That is the monthly newsletter that we've been around trying to find. That's the service, kind of like constant contact, if you're aware of them, you know.
That's okay.
Is that the service, to send emails from the bulletin or?
So, it's supposed to be, you know, it's.
Elchin?
Yes.
Does the service that?
Two hundred and eighty-six? No.
That's how many people are subscribed to get their emails from us.
That's actually great, we're growing that number.
Oh, good.
Uh, more and more every year, it used to be a nine-seven when I first started, so that's awesome.
We have how many cardholders?
Right, well.
Oh, one or two families.
One person, yeah. Um, and we also have children's Facebook, so.
They have their own subscribers.
Yeah. So there's another two hundred, we said, and subscribe to that.
It's getting some good work.
Yeah.
And then, if there is any questions about the statistics, ask. One thing that we're in the middle of adding to the collection is these tote bags. So they're reusable tote bags, so patrons can check them out when you're walking through weeks, just like a book, so that they can, you know, they probably they have a stack of books and they wanna come back. So instead of giving them plastic or nothing, they can break one of these tote bags, bring the books in. Um, and then they can bring back when they're done with it.
Inserts.
Free.
Insertizing. Right?
Right.
Are we selling them?
No. Well, those were out of turn. So what we spent on bags.
Yes.
Comes off of our ninety-two percent materials, because that's the material that circles.
So we don't need to sell them?
Right.
Or we could.
We could, I asked the friends for about eight years to sell them, but they haven't really wanted to get into it. So they're like, they found out the idea of circulating, and I was like, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, still advertising. Are you even labeling them at all, like with the numbers, so it's?
We're gonna have a bar food.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we checked out, so somebody who doesn't give them that food, you know. Yes.
I think it is. Does that get you free or reported on?
I think it does.
It's a lively discussion.
And that's.
Well, better than that, than the nurse. That one is a terrible thing. Okay, non-reach plan, what kind of a verdict do we?
Yeah, if I could, it's, um, no motion going anywhere yet, so it's not due till December. Um, so I will submit errors out of the way, um, I can, in two, that's, that's a lot.
And we did some of the statistical stuff, done with the survey before the team left.
Exactly.
We can build off of that. I don't know whether we want to cyber, I think that idea of all that, roundtable discussion, it's been sort of, it's been doing to everything.
At what later?
At Thanksgiving, coming up. Writing, non-reach plan, okay, unbusiness, carry your own.
Okay. I have gotten several, um, emails at home and I got, I had a big phone call while I was on vacation in the United States about the genealogy club. Barbara Rogers and Cheryl McCarthy, um, that, and, and that important. And, um, just really limited attendance at the genealogy club. And because of the way the trustees were scheduled, I couldn't go for almost a year. And I was very, it's a problem. Go home and you can go to the others. Interesting. So, can I read the content of this to you as quick? It's not there. Uh, I should, I had a conversation with the board, which I really found. Oh, good, well, they said they were going to. Um, but I, it warned him up and then, um, I said that I would miss out in the year of trustees. I went to the library Wednesday night and had a great time listening to Deena tell stories about her family as well as telling mom, just the two of us, Cheryl, that was his love. Um, and Deena had, I've shared with her a list that she forwarded to me. And the list wasn't the place to start. I actually don't have that in me right now, but, um.
Is it maybe a little less?
Yeah.
I have it. I have Cheryl forward it to me.
Okay. And I know some of those people never took themselves off that list, but I know they need to be, it's a two-month.
We added them to the newsletter, so they should all now be sent down with the newsletter, which includes two million other patients.
I couldn't hear the list, so.
So we, we added all of the emails that Cheryl made to our newsletter, you know, newsletter that comes with one.
Okay.
So that gives you a much view of all our programs, including.
People who need to go to the.
Which is also on our best calendar each month.
Okay. And I, um, I will make a point of bringing up the, the club.
True.
There's certainly, I guess, a lot of time, I should be off, pushing on my own now. Um, and I, I just wondered about using that club as, uh, they, one of the things that people really enjoy before, some of the speakers we had come on, the public, but related to genealogy, and they missed that.
Do you want to tap that level?
Yeah, we're, I mean, incidentally, get funding programs that relate to genealogy and have them scheduled at the same time as the genealogy club, so that it's, you know. Um, we have, we have one that I will get for possibly September. Um, to, to schedule, you just have to come from the person, see if they're available for that specific day, and then guess if they're interested in that.
And I, I'd like to do it too. But I guess.
Yeah.
I also think that it's something that we can learn, at least, um, to, to, to have the opportunity to, uh, those simple, you know, things like that.
Um, that's intriguing. I started five years ago, but, um.
Oh, it's okay.
So, I don't know, but, you know, I'm sure there's some kind of appropriate genealogy type of, you know, program for this, that's one thought, so we can, we can, we can, you know, just send, you know, shout out to the children's library and the rest and see. I look very good.
Yes, I have, I have a few, um, references in relation to that. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Uh, like, there are fun, give them stories, you see. Fun recipes.
I think you're around it too, it's a volunteer to do it, it's not like you're.
Yes, as long as however you do it, it's something that they, and they figure at home.
Yes.
Nothing that stays here or whatever you can, yeah.
That's like me and my last kid, I'm not comfortable putting my work around public.
Couple things, staying with, I have a business, I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm a little confused, sorry, what was the issue? The, the new positions have been loose depending? A little fuzzy, I want to.
Oh, well.
What the issue was that you were.
Kind of focus the structure of the new, to some extent, and have presentations. And, um, it started out with people just kind of sharing what they were working on and, um, having people, um, coming with questions a lot of the time. And there were a couple of founder members that he would. And I was active in it. And I, and actually, I can't even remember if that was before I became trustee. But I then couldn't do anything about making it to meetings, and the, the attendance just grew.
All right, so usually we're revitalizing.
Yes.
And we say it's fine, and it's two minutes, I want to just stand by it.
Oh, okay, that's, that is what it is, is Jane was very active with it, and Jane switched away from the library. And then, and then I was very active in making sure that it was in progress. Uh, and then people could share information about their, like, some of the music reviews or whatever else was in the library. And it just sort of felt right.
Yeah, we're, we're doing a special, a special, you know, newsletter, uh, separate thing from our monthly one, in regards to the September, um, genealogy club, to try to blast out, hey, you remember this, like, you know, having started off in the fall, which is a good time of year for.
Yes.
Genealogy, and get back to some decisions, and that was, I'm going to do like a separate part of the tour in the corner. See if we get together as a way and see.
Yeah.
What could go in there, what, um.
Have a draft going, so.
Yeah.
Well, and, um, I don't know how many people related to the club were using the genealogical connection to the, the library camps. It'll pay a lot for it here. But it's always.
We're talking about the ancestors.
No.
Oh.
Any of these years?
Yes. Yes, and a lot of. And I, um, don't belong to that. I don't pay if we belong to it, but I can use it here.
We can.
Yes.
I stay with the ancestry.
I do pay on ancestry, but I don't have a, 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 I want to do four or something like that, or in Canada, we, we, and that's a beauty, it's, it's, right.
Yeah.
So, I said.
Sounds good.
It's kind of cycling back to this, or. I'm going to go on that a little forward.
Yes.
And just a conjunction with, uh, genealogy and all this other stuff. We put ourselves in some way, try to link out to the sons and daughters, the full settlers. But there's a natural connection there, obviously. Good to think forward, uh, with the media resuscitate. Town, I remember, series, which was, I thought terrifically successful at the end of nineteen and beginning of twenty. And then, of course, we get COVID there. But, uh, quite off all that, we got a, uh, last email, all of us, from Freeman out there in Shogun Falls, wondering about, uh, other libraries perhaps having received relegation or notice of relegation, asking policies.
Do you want to give that to anyone?
Came from a mail saying.
To the door.
I don't know what I have, retained it.
Was it asking if anybody could?
Yes. Yes. Dan Alden.
Was it from him or was it from?
Chairperson, board trustees, Shogun Falls, and some details, and went to trustees and fiance, that's fake, that's not, and we're all on that list, you know? Good, okay. All right. Oh, yeah, trustees, officials, media. All right. Stop.
No, no, it's, it's.
I know the name. I'm going to be a month, did you get it?
What date was it?
July eleventh. July eleventh.
At that time, I was, so. I assumed about.
Dan Alden? Yes, you found him, okay. Did you see him?
I probably honestly, if it came across as Dan Alden, I would, didn't.
Well, you know.
Anything that, I don't.
There's a lot of the details, okay, come and ask it then. All right. For example, has anybody had, uh, deal with a lawsuit or federal lawsuit or an asset policy? So, I'm here, I don't know if he's allowed. I did not respond. Okay, anything else, guys?
He said something, I don't remember, and he goes, say, oh, he could bring it up at the other, oh, uh, virtual use.
Oh, right, right. Right, the, the ability to, uh, pull virtual agents, extend it through, what, July of next year, if we choose to do it. We have already, as trustees, agreed to do that when we want to. Town has permitted us to do it as well, so would you prefer that we meet by Zoom, guys?
Massachusetts is relatively low, but infections are increasing.
Yes.
There is subvariant, it's, I don't know, there's been people who are sick that's awarding, but I know a bunch of people, but suddenly, like, nobody in, um, doesn't, it's good to be careful, we're relatively far away.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's changed, that situation, it's worse.
It's stable.
It's money box.
Because obviously, it's tons sensitive, so we need to make a decision fourteen days before it makes me to know. Um, regard of all this human resource stuff, do we want to put that on agenda for the next time? Do we want to try a special trustee meeting to chat it through? We want to do a breakout of a couple of trustees, and we do one and two, we get troubles as we know we have to post it, so maybe we should reach out two weeks, post a trustee meeting, we could always waive it all.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely need the time to think about it.
Two weeks could be enough.
I might forget about it too. Oh, my gosh, I have an hour, I have a lot to think about this. Um, yeah, no, two weeks is fine. I'm on vacation now, so that's fine.
That's the old.
Yeah, that's, two weeks is fine, I would, I would do that.
What would we post for, uh, as an impersonating?
So, what would it be?
And the topic, the subject topic would be discussion of staff and human resources issues. Is that, is that agreeable, is it?
Yeah, and it would be a special meeting or just a, because it was a regular.
Would be a trustee meeting.
Board meeting.
Just a regular board meeting, and we'll have that far bigger one. Absolutely.
To talk about.
Absolutely.
It's an additional schedule.
That's kind of strange, but we've got to put our brains on this.
I do, yes.
And, um, you know, I, I sat with Diane and brother a couple of weeks ago to go over all of this vacation stuff. And I came out, did you notice, confused? But at the same time, um, reasserting that this area always did, we are telling employees, some of those states are, it's not, we don't have to adhere to the rules or it's our, so that makes a good point, let's, let's, let's tackle it.
But at least we can talk about our questions, and if it's possible, it's definitely we can invite Diane or, or, to join as that meeting.
To be clear, as she and I finished chatting, um, anytime combined.
Yeah, and I, it's, it's good from their perspective, how would you go around changing this? I mean, the first people, what are the steps, you know, the whole thing, I mean, I mean, we can't change something we don't understand. How do you do it?
The first, first question is, do you perceive it as a problem?
Yeah.
They have, they have to, they have.
They are, they stop.
If they say, we're fine, everything's okay, it's very light, and the whole of it, then things, and that's up in the middle of the play.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, where is it for us? I think it's at the Montreal Free Office. Let's do it. At this is a great time, what do you all think?
That's great, we need to.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
Let's do it, three on the third.
I may, I may, I have a, I have a, I'm on the fourth.
Do we want to move it a little earlier? I can too. At this distance. It's like, you, you got to. I mean, we need to find.
Do you want to put this too?
Do you, so you can handle? Nobody's going on vacation, are they? Are we good on the third?
And chill.
And chill?
Yes. And then, should we also set the, um, mine after that for a regular form here, which
Building at seventeen? Check your calendars, I have seventeen August. We're going to go to the yard.
No, but I would, I sleep in.
Focus.
Um, what time?
Get party along to seventeen. I have, I have the, the, I'm at two fifteen. Three, three fifteen, three thirty, um, what do you think? Sure. We get anything else? Is there, so three thirty?
Yes.
Yeah, three thirty on the seventeen. Oh, wait. So, we're three this time.
But I say happy new.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do the process, do you need to vote a decision?
So, who? You men know this. Thank you.